Budget proposal. My name is Douglas Farnham, Chair of the Board. I'd like to thank Neil Kamen for getting the note about blue in support of our clean water today. You know, we're thinking similar directions. Like to color code my wardrobe. I did want to take a little bit of liberty to do, point out one thing that's a common misunderstanding on the Lakes and Crisis Fund. We did point out that that fund is for primarily like the planning and the organization, but there's far more funding invested in efforts of those lakes. So that fund is for the planning. It's not for the implementation of efforts related to lakes that are in crisis. So it doesn't represent a line item that that shows what we're doing related to those lakes and the changes we're trying to make. And I know that's caused people just concern at a, at a quick read over the years. So today we are, so I'll go over the agenda really quickly. The purpose of today's public hearing really isn't for the board to be making any decisions. It's to hear from the public on what we've constructed to this point so that we can then take that feedback into account and make adjustments if, if necessary or appropriate. One note, when we moving through the public comment section, generally speaking, we appreciate questions. We don't usually respond to them real time unless they are extremely straightforward and something that we are confident that there's no room for misinterpretation. But usually we are, we want those questions and comments, but the questions will likely take back, look at them, make sure we're looking at it properly and constructing a well thought out response. So I would say we're happy to hear it, but it will not necessarily be an interactive session. So right after I finish with my rambling welcome, Sarah Coleman will go through on some clarifying questions, about 10 minutes of that, and then we'll open it up to the public comment. I don't think, I don't think we have enough volume at this point to, to really need any kind of restriction on per speaker going into it. So I think we'll try to give as much room for public comment as we can. If we see things going extremely long, like beyond the two minutes, I think we might need to impose. But how many people do we have signed up at this point?
I think I believe.
Right. I thought we were pretty comfortable. So I think if we start to have anyone get over five, we may ask you to, to wrap up. But we should have plenty of space for people to put their comment on the, out there today. And then after the comment period, we're only wrapping up and summarizing the next steps of how we're moving forward, how we're considering your comment and integrating it into our process. So thank you all for attending. I hope you enjoyed the presentation. It's always helpful for me as well as a, just a refresher of how all these pieces and parts and programs fit together. So with that, I'll hand it over to Sarah.
Great. Thanks Chair Farnham. I'll share my screen just to start. Just to start off, I want to make sure folks are comfortable using the Teams platform. And so just if you need assistance hearing, you can access live captions through the more three dots. Either at the top or bottom of your screen, move your mouse to language and speech and show live captions will appear as an option to select. All meetings are also recorded and shared on the YouTube channel to be watched later at slower speeds. This link should be clickable through your screen and transcripts are also available on request by email. Again, this link should be clickable through your screen. And you can provide comment by typing in the chat. The chat bubble will toggle on and off and you can type comments in there and they will be viewable by everyone. You can also request to speak by raising your hand, in which case you will need to unmute yourself. And all participants are muted except during public comment sections of the agenda when you may unmute yourself. And you can optionally turn on or off your camera as well. For those joining by phone, you cannot raise your hand and you will need to press star six on your dial pad. If you'd like to speak during public comment. And also just please note that our online RSVP form for all Clean Water Board meetings allows you to pre-request any additional accessibility assistance should you need it. So please reach out. Okay, so would like to just use the next few minutes and see if there are any clarifying questions before we begin the public comment period.
All right. We'll move on into the public comment phase of the hearing. And I would say we do have space so that, you know, we generally speaking, people who've signed up will go through those first. There will be room for people that, that didn't sign up to be able to still bring some comment forward. And we probably still have enough space that if you, if you think of a question that you didn't get to right now and would like to, to ask it after, after the general comment comes through, we can always revisit that. So, John, are you the one that has the list of who signed up or is that?
Yeah, sure. We'll start with Claire. And then next is Dana. Dorian, if you're on the line.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Claire Ireland. I'm here today with the Vermont Association of Conservation Districts, representing Vermont's 14 Natural Resource Conservation Districts. Our main concern with the budget right now is the proposed $957,619 reduction in line item 1.4. This is a difficult line item to comment because, on because it supports 10 different program areas under the Agency of Agriculture. So I want to acknowledge that we're, we're not entirely clear how that reduction would play out among the 10 different programs. But we do just want to say that this line item represents our most important source of funding for maintaining a clean water workforce here in the state. These are people who are trained, who are professional that we want to retain long-term to be able to help farmers, foresters, other working landowners make clean water improvements. So in addition to supporting our existing staffing in that area, this light item also represents the most important source of match we have for federal funds that allow us to backfill capacity within the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. Our staff actually can work within that system as engineers, as program assistants, as grant managers, program managers, to help keep federal funds flowing to Vermont state agencies and to Vermont, Vermonters broadly. And so that pairing of state and federal funding really does help to keep federal money flowing. And even with the 40% reduction in staffing we're seeing within NRCS. So the reduction in that line item is concerning to us. We obviously don't know how that would play out exactly, but we do just want to urge that investments into the Clean Water Initiative Program, the Ag CWP Fund, is maintained or even increased over time to help meet the needs that, in particular, in an environment where federal funding is, is uncertain or where federal staffing is reduced. We want to thank the board for the increase in line item 1.2, which is the Tactical Basin Planning line item. This line item also heavily supports a clean water workforce. And we really appreciate that this budget acknowledges the reality of increasing costs of staffing over time. That said, we would increase, we would ask or urge an increase to that line item of an additional $25,000. It's fairly minimal increase. It would bring that line item to 800,000. And we just recognize that there are potential additional entities that may be statutorily able to have grants under that program in FY27. We may be adding entities. And so just to maintain funding levels for all the entities involved, we think an additional $25,000 would, would help us out. So thank you.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, I was probably thinking the same question.
Do you have suggestions for where, where we would take money from in order to fill those requests? Obviously we have a fixed dollar amount that we are dealing with.
That's a harder question for me to, to give right now. We will take a look and we can potentially submit written comments to that effect.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
And just to make sure, I'm thinking about the testimony properly. Secretary Moore, was one point, line 1.4 involved in the balancing between one-time and base funding?
I think it was. I would actually defer to Gianna or Sarah on that.
Line 1.4 is the agricultural funding. Well, right to, to move bait, one-time funds, sorry, to move line 1.51 program, Agency of Ag Program Support into base funds. We moved the line 1.4, more of that now is in one-time fund. But so, so it's part of that swap, but it's not the focus, I think, of the comment.
So was the, the, the number mentioned in testimony, was that impacted by that swap? Cause I, I wasn't under the impression that our total funding for agriculture went down by nearly a million dollars.
The reduction, I think, is compared to last fiscal year and the loss of a lot of the one-time funding for agriculture.
That's, that's the way I reading the budget. Yes, that's correct. Same comparison to the last fiscal year.
Okay, we weren't seeing Dana online. So we'll move, is Mary Ellen?
Oh, Dana now is joined.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, great. Dana, you're welcome to give your comment.
Oh terrific. Thank you so much. I apologize I was not online earlier and I'm appearing live from my pickup truck. So appreciate having the opportunity to, to provide comments today. My name's Dana Duran. I'm Executive Director of the Professional Logging Contractors of the Northeast. PLC for short. PLC is a educational nonprofit that represents timber harvesting and timber hauling companies in the state of Vermont. I'm just going to provide some commentary to the Clean Water Board on line items 2.11, 2.12, and 2.4 specifically. I also had an opportunity to appear before the board several times during your budget formulation process for the last fiscal year. So I'm, I'm not going to belabor some of the points, but I do want to talk about those three points specifically. But before I do, I just want to give you a sense of, of what has changed and, and how quickly things have changed in the state of Vermont, just because of drought and weather conditions, but also because of markets. I'll try to just keep that brief and then get right into those three points. Last time I spoke to you, this time last year, contractors were dealing with, with the impacts of floods, trying to get into harvest sites, soft conditions, warm winters, tremendous amounts of weather, how, how things have changed so quickly with drought, et cetera. Conversely, market conditions for the industry have dropped precipitously during that amount of, during that same time. We're now seeing in the region, six pulp and paper mills have put on hold operations of, of accepting wood. And building markets are also, also very negatively impacted. But just to give you a sense on what's happening with the market. Moving to those three bullet points within the budget, I know that the Department of Forest Parks and Recreation has submitted requests to increase 2.11 and 2.12. We're strongly supportive of the request for 2.11 of about 150,000 in the budget for skidder bridges, temporary bridges and for FPR to use to access harvest operations. 2.12, I know they've asked for an additional 1.2 million, which I believe is about half a million over the FY26 and about 650,000 more than the FY27 draft. We think that is important to go to that amount because it'll allow FBR to conduct a timber harvest in the next fiscal year and provide entry for timber harvest operations for roads, et cetera, and to comply with AMPs that are absolutely necessary to conduct those operations. So we're very supportive of that. Lastly, 2.4, so the, the board was gracious enough to provide $500,000 in FY26 to create a low interest loan program for harvesting contractors to access those funds to purchase new or used harvesting equipment that would be beneficial for harvesting operations in clean water. In the 20, FY27 draft budget, that line item was zeroed out. I know FBR is working very closely with the Vermont Economic Development Authority to stand up that low interest loan program. But we also know that because of how constrained the markets are, how important it is to help contractors afford equipment right now, we, we think it would be very important to try to put some funding back into the draft budget for 2.4. $500,000 is not going to go very far with how expensive equipment is. And we would really like to encourage the board to try to put some funding back in for 2.4 so that this program can get up and running quickly with VITA and that contractors can take advantage of it. So I'll stop there. I think that's probably enough for now. Happy to answer any questions and appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you Dana.
Thank you. From what I can tell, I'm not seeing Mary, Mary Ellen or Linda or Annake or Christopher or Albert on, on Teams. Oh, Chris Callahan? Oh, great. In person. How delightful. Great. You're welcome to give your comment. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. I'm Chris Callahan. I'm Associate Director of UVM Extension. I'm grateful for the chance to comment on our shared common goals. I will follow up with written comments with more detail. What I'd like to do is focus my comments today on more personal examples of the impact that the Clean Water Fund support has provided through our work. People need to eat and we need to protect our environment, including clean water. And it takes nutrients to raise animals, to make milk, to grow vegetables. We work to ensure those nutrients remain in productive use and not negatively impacting rivers, lakes and wetlands. In short, UVM Extension and partners like the Conservation Districts work to keep farms, work with farms to keep soil in place, to reduce stormwater runoff and prevent introduction of nutrients in the bodies of water. And we do this with the Support for Clean Water Fund through programs like the Clean Water Initiative Program, CWP, and the Capital Equipment Assistance Program, SEEP, administered through the Agency of Agriculture, Food Markets, which we covered in the first portion of this meeting. Our work's based on relationships, community, importantly, co-learning. It's built upon years and decades of participatory research and joint learning that includes farmers as direct partners and research-based improvement of practices that support water quality. This ground truth is the research and education we pursue. Our partner farms inform and direct the work we do. It keeps the research practical, which ensures the practice is both science-based and also ready for adoption. What's it look like? It looks like Paul Dunton in Brookline trialing a short season summer cover crop of mustard, of all things, to protect soil, reduce runoff and retain phosphorus. That mustard also biohumidates the soil naturally to manage a soil-borne disease that impacts strawberries and supports native pollinators. I bet the last thing you expected to hear about in this meeting this morning was someone growing mustard in Vermont in support of water quality. It also looks like Discovery Acres, a participatory action research model hosted by the Vassett family in St. Albans, created to understand the impact of conservation practices on water quality, soil health and crop productivity. At Discovery Acres, a farmer-led research demonstration outreach program focuses on the complex relationship between commercial agricultural production and water quality using a paired micro watershed approach. It looks like Hillside Homestead, a 50 cow pasture-based dairy in Albany, where funding helped expand grazing acreage from 14 to 44 acres and triple rest periods between grazings, deepening root biomass, increasing ground cover and reducing compaction. This in addition with new fencing, laneways and a new watering system, reduced nutrient runoff and erosion from farm fields and had the added benefit that the farm was able to sustain their cows on pasture through the significant 2025 drought when many farms stroked. It also looks like George Foster in Middlebury, who wanted to try no-till agriculture 25 years ago because of his interest in soil conservation, but gave up when he encountered barriers to, to adoption involving cost and experiencing more failures than successes in early small-scale trials. About 14 years ago, George attended a no-till and cover crop conference hosted by UVM, which helped him realize he could make no-till work and is challenging regens clay soils by embracing the idea that cover crops are what make no-till work. These are four specific examples of how Clean Water Fund support has enabled very direct applied research, education and the technical assistance leading to behavior change and improve water quality. The Partner Database maintained as part of the CWP program includes many, many more and loads of data. What else might we do in the future? Farms we work with continue to highlight the need to focus on future work and constant adaptation and adoption of new technologies such as precision agriculture, vigilant awareness and preparation for climate change and its impacts such as severe weather shifts and, and events. Constant and rigorous evaluation of economics practice in pursuit of those win-win solutions and sustained focus on soil health and other agricultural practices as pathways providing the greatest phosphorus reduction per dollar of investment. In closing, I want to acknowledge the support of the Clean Water Fund, providing, provided to support our efforts related to agriculture, not just through UVM Extension, but through the network of education and service providers that aim to ease the burden of improved practice among the farming community Vermont, we all depend on. Through our work together and with your continued support, we think farms and the land they steward will remain an integral part of the clean water solution the state needs. Thank you for your support. That's my main reason for being here is to thank the board for your support of these efforts in agriculture. I'll follow up with more detailed written comments for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person that we had that RSVP'd was Albert Perry. And bringing them online. So now we have some time to open it up if there's anybody online or in the room that would like to make a public comment.
Give it a little bit longer. Seems like we might be good on public comment. You can feel free to unmute and speak up or raise your hand if you're online. If you have been trying to speak up, we did not hear you. So put something in the chat. Chat's not restricted on this board meeting, correct? Okay. If you were trying to speak and were unable to. I should know that I still make mistakes with my microphone. So I want to give.
We did just receive an email from Albert Perry who's struggling to sign on, but just submitted an email. I'm happy to either read it online or submit it to the board, whatever your recommendation is there. He's struggling to.
Since we have the space for it, if you wouldn't mind reading it aloud so everyone can hear it.
It seems relatively brief. Thank you Secretary Moore, Governor Scott and the Vermont Legislature for continuing this very important work. I understand there is never enough money to pay for all the work needed each year and the rising costs of Vermont state obligations, but am concerned about the decrease in clean water funding for fiscal year 2027. And grateful to all who saw the need for remedial action at Lake Carmine. And we were able and willing to undertake and continue the work needed to save this important resource for future generations. As a longtime summer resident of Franklin, I look forward to Lake Carmine being clean again and no longer a lake in crisis. Please continue and increase the important work of protecting all of Vermont's precious public waters. It is not only a vital current need, but a key investment in Vermont's future viability. Very respectfully, Albert Perry, Middlebury, Vermont. Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right. We're not seeing any flags in chat.
Clarifying questions.
Yes, absolutely.
My name is Sherri Young from Orwell. At the very beginning in the video, it talks about Lake Carmine is the only lake in crisis that is in the state of Vermont. Is that correct? Okay, because when you, when, when Mr. Farnham or Board Chair Farnham explained the Lakes and Crisis Program or for funding, you said these lakes in crisis. So I wasn't sure if there was another lake in crisis you're referring to other than Lake Carmine.
No.
Not multiple lakes in crisis, just Lake Carmine.
Currently it's just Lake Carmine, but the idea behind the fund is to just provide the resources so that if a lake is designated as being in crisis, then it's eligible for that additional planning support essentially. But you're, you're correct. Lake Carmine is the only current lake in crisis. Secretary Moore?
Yeah, I was just going to add that there was interest or discussion in the legislature around Lake Minn-Formay Dog as a lake in crisis. It doesn't currently meet all of the criteria for that designation. And so it hasn't moved forward. But that is the only other lake I think that's even been discussed for that particular event. Thank you.
Excellent question. Thank you for that. And we do have plenty of space. If there are any other clarifying questions, we're willing to see if we can answer them or help at this point. All right.
A comment? Oh, well, okay.
It can be a blend.
Sure, sure. Thanks for doing this, everyone. My name is Jude Stowe with Septic Education for Everyone. We are a community-based grassroots organization, relatively young, that arose in response to, well, a project for my service of the Upper River Valley Subcommittee and also my own interest. There's an aspect of clean water that just really typically goes, goes, goes by the wayside and is not effectively addressed by either government or business. And that is septic failure. There may be two of them this very day, two new ones in Vermont. And it's, it's an inky subject and an ungainly subject because it involves, well, you know, an unpleasant subject matter and also behavior modification. So our group, the Septic Education for Everyone, has taken it upon ourselves to attempt this through libraries, through schools, through public awareness programs. And we will continue to do this throughout fiscal year for us, 2026. We are not funded at all by you, but we are having an event on January 9th in Room 11 in the State Capitol, where we will have some guest speakers and some high school students and some projects and some games to bring awareness to this crucial subject. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Sorry to put you on the spot, Secretary Moore, but I think one thing you and I have talked about in the past is that there are many state and federal programs that are connected to clean water and aren't part of the Clean Water Fund, right? And one of those that comes to mind is, is in this case is Healthy Homes. I know that's for a specific population, but I think we have a shared interest, we being the state of Vermont in this case, in, in septic system failure. I don't know if you have anything to add or clarify on that.
Yeah. Are you familiar with our Healthy Homes program?
Um, only just barely.
Okay, so it, it was originally funded with American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So some of the federal funding for mountain disease following the COVID pandemic. Subsequently, the governor and legislature worked together to commit additional one-time general fund money to this program. But it's allowed us to replace at this point more than 600 failed or failing wells or septic systems for people who need, who are income qualified, so low-income Vermonters. We just had our net last round or our next round, I guess I should say, of eligibility. Received several hundred additional applications, anticipate making, I think, between 125 and 200 awards, depending on sort of what people's needs are. But it's an area we're very active in. The other thing I thought could be of interest, and I don't know if Gianna or Emily or Sarah is able to talk to it, is some of the septic social work that has been done in places like Lake Carmine, but just trying to raise awareness of property owners, particularly seasonal property owners whose primary residence may be on municipal water and sewer and therefore don't have the same level of awareness about the needs to maintain their septic systems. But there is, I believe, some funding through the Clean Water Initiative that's gone into supporting some of those outreach and education efforts. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it may be through, often it's identified through some of our local partners like watershed organizations. And perhaps some capacity support may go to that, but I'm not 100% sure. It also comes up through the basin planning process.
perhaps some capacity support may go to that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. It also comes up through the basin planning process and the different uh partners at the table that participate in tactical basin plans, which are watershed-based plans where they look in that region, what are some of the priority water quality concerns? And uh, so I don't know that our team directly has hosted those, but often it's a a local implementer that would be involved with facilitating those types of events.
Yeah, so that is, that the type of activity you're describing is something that clean water funding has been used for in in certain contexts. And then as as Doug described, we have some of these adjacent programs um that have important benefits for clean water that aren't sort of reflected in the the clean water budget being discussed today.
Sure, thank you. No, I I actually have heard of Healthy Homes as something that addresses septic failures once they've already occurred.
Correct.
Which is crucial. Actually, we have a septic survivor series on our website from people giving their personal stories about having survived them, and that is great. Well, our approach is actually more on the front end, and that is to prevent them to begin with. Um, but thank you both.
And I would just highlight also outside of the clean water budget, we have some funding through the Lake Champlain Basin Program that has worked with service providers. Um, and yeah, so I've worked with installers and service providers to provide more training and education and outreach to that group, knowing that they're often the front lines with homeowners and landowners that are are responsible for maintaining these septic systems. So that's another um, another project that has been funded to support this work. Um, and there's been development of education materials um to go with that.
Definitely appreciate the perspective and context. I do agree that it's a challenging topic for people to talk through. Um, I know even talking through the creation of Healthy Homes was a a difficult conversation. Um, and I think uh, often you see our programs built to be reactive, right? And I think tho- those preventative programs can be harder to launch, but also have a much better return on investment because when you're preventing, you're usually going to see uh less cost and when you're preventing than when if you're reacting to something that's occurred. So thank you for the comments. Uh, and for awareness, we had a question asked and answered about the criteria for lakes in crisis, if they're available to the public. Um, and Emily answered that in the chat, if you're curious about the criteria for that. Primarily, uh, and I think basic, I'll riff off of your answer a little bit. Those are statutory criteria, which means, in my opinion, not having gone through the section most recently, we being the state of Vermont administration does not have a lot of discretion in that designation process. I believe it's a pretty strongly defined statutory language. And that's why it was a legislative discussion on Lake Man from A Dog. It's not a policy decision on our end. It's pretty uh strict statutory criteria. Is that fair, Emily?
Yes, I, it is in statute, the criteria, and then once a designation has been made, then there's certain actions that get triggered that would be implemented by our agency. Um, but yeah, I think that's a fair summary. Thanks, Doug.
One last call for any potential comments or questions. All right, moving in to wrap up. Um, so our public comment period is currently open, right? We're pretty much in the middle, sixty percent through. Uh, it'll run through November sixteenth. On the second of December, we'll have the meeting to review those public comments and um make a final clean water budget recommendation uh and, time permitting, address other board business. Um, so I think I started off today saying, you know, we're not, this is not a decision-making event, right? There won't be any changes. Uh, that next meeting on the second uh will potentially have motions by the board, et cetera. Um, and we'll be able to make that final recommendation. Um, and then that recommendation goes to the governor uh to be incorporated in the governor's recommended budget. Uh, and then in February, we have a meeting to review the governor's recommended budget to see how closely that budget aligns with what the uh what the board has recommended. Um, and then, of course, updating Clean Water Fund operating statement based on the January uh adjustments by the um Joint Fiscal Committee. No, I'm sorry. E-Board, E-Board adopts the revenue forecast. Um, they meet at the same time, and they are ninety percent the same people. And I've for fifteen years, and I still go back and forth between Jo- Joint Fiscal and Emergency Board. Um, right? So I'll, at this time, accept a motion to adjourn, although do we even have to?
We do.
Okay, good. Right. We would. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, please. All right. Chad, can I accept yours' motion as a second?
Yes, you can, right?
All right. Any discussion before we discuss adjourning? Nope. All right. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, Dana? Thank you. That adjourns today's public hearing of the Clean Water Board. Thank you all for attending.
Uh, what time is meeting on the second?
Oh, can you see that in the notes?
I believe it's at one o'clock, but let me double check.
Was that in the notes? Sorry, I missed it.
Uh, I said I believe it's at one o'clock, but let me double check for you.
You're right.
Okay, one o'clock on the second.
Okay, thank you guys very much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that the next meeting?